November nineteenth, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Please rise and join us for a flag salute. Would the General Counsel please call a roll?
President Cobb?
Here.
Vice President Viall?
Here.
Director Winskill?
Here.
Director Heinz?
Here.
And is Director Leon excused?
He is.
Thank you.
Item number four, adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption. Uh, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about items on the agenda? Okay. Hearing done. All those in favor of adopting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, approval of the recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Men's Warehouse.
Good evening, President Cobb and members of the board. I don't believe our Men's Warehouse representative is here this evening, but I'd like to go forward and, and tell you why they won, or we could move ahead with the Kiwanis proclamation just in case it gives them a few more minutes.
I think we should move ahead to item five point two and see if the representative is able to be here.
Madam President, if you want, and if they're not, we could reach back out to them and even do two in one night to make sure that they are here.
Okay. Yeah, let's move on to item five point two and look back and see, and then we'll go forward from there. Five point two, recognition of Kiwanis Club of Tacoma for a hundred years of service to the community, schools, and students of Tacoma.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. In recognition of the one hundredth anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma, you have signed a proclamation honoring that, and if, with your pleasure, I'd be happy to read that. Whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world with more than six hundred thousand members of all ages and abilities in more than eighty nations, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma, chartered October eighth nineteen eighteen, is the first Kiwanis Club in the Pacific Northwest, establishing the first international district of Kiwanis International, and whereas the members of the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma are devoted to improving the world, one child and one community at a time, by seeking primacy to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life, and whereas in addition to improving the lives of children in Tacoma and in communities around the world, Kiwanis Club of Tacoma members promote the development of community leadership, positive role models, intercultural understanding, cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. And whereas Tacoma community leaders included the initiator, Washington State Representative Guy Kelly, who served as the first president of the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma and first governor of the Pacific Northwest Kiwanis District, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma and its members have shown by their actions and good works for the past one hundred years that it is a significant asset to the community by providing leadership and funding various community projects, and whereas the service provided by the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma will continue to have a positive impact on our children and residents of our community, now therefore, the Board of Directors of Tacoma School District Number Ten do hereby honor, acknowledge, and thank the Kiwanis Club of Tacoma for providing meaningful service to our community, schools, and students in celebrating its one hundredth anniversary. And here to accept the proclamation is Mr. Willie Stewart, former school board member and longtime member of Kiwanis Club of Tacoma. Mr. Stewart, congratulations.
To the President of the Board, to the members of the Board, and to the superintendent and staff, I'm excited to accept this award. I'm really honored and humbled for that opportunity. You've heard what we have done over one hundred years, and I want you to say that we are continuing. We're proud to say that we have two members of your staff that are members of our down, well, club, Rosalyn Medina and Justina Johnson. But we also have the partnership because we have three key clubs that we have relationship with. The Stadium Key Club, Mount DeHoma Key Club, and the Lincoln Key Club. Eighty-four members, paid members at the Mount DeHoma Club. It's our first year with them, and it's a very active group. But our whole theme is, we'd like to change the lives of people, children, one child at a time. And we're just grateful for this type of recognition, and we, we will continue that service. Now, the one hundred years of existence, I've been a member of the organization for forty-eight years and twice the president of the group. So we are committed to longevity and to service. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Stewart, if you want to come on up, we'll present you with the proclamation. Thank members of the Kiwanis Club for all that they do, and we always thank you, Mr. Stewart, for your continued support of all Tacoma students and all of your service to the community. Thank you. Um, seeing, um, Mr. Vopel, if the representative shows, I'll just look for a signal, so we'll put a pause on that until when they do, and if they're not here tonight, we'll move that to our next meeting in December. Thank you. Moving on to item six, Superintendent's Report.
Tried to keep up with our budget and make sure our public is informed, so some of these slides the board has probably seen before, but again, we want to continue to update the board and our public watching to make sure they know where we are. So I've asked Ms. Medina to update us tonight. Thank you, Rosalyn.
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to provide an update. This is probably more for the public than it will be for the board. The board has been shared this information previously, but we have not done a public update. The last update that we have done to the public was at our study session in October. So just to give a quick refresh, we have been facing some pretty significant budget deficits this year, and we've outlined a process with which to address those budget deficits. In the eighteen nineteen year, our shortfall process will be to go through four rounds of, of reductions. First, we're looking at our Phase One, or central admin and exempt positions and any vacancies that are sitting in the system. Phase Two would be to look at other central admin-related expenditures broader than just the exempt staff, excuse me. Third would be to look at supports and ancillary services that are not directly related to the classroom, and then four would be the school-based. We don't expect in this cycle of eighteen nineteen that we are going to need to get into any kind of Phase Three or Phase Four reductions. We believe we'll be able to work just through Phases One and Two to address the eighteen nineteen deficit, and then when we get into nineteen twenty, we will reiterate this process. As far as our, as far as our reductions go, as of today, this is what we have compiled, and I've, I've adjusted this presentation to reflect both the information that we provided in October as well as the newer information so that it's clear what's changed or what's different or what's new. The personnel that we have reduced in Phase One A, which was what we presented in October, represented twelve point six FTE, approximately one point three million of realized savings. And the difference in my mind of what realized versus planned savings are, are things that we've either notified staff or that we've actually moved in the system or eliminated in the system versus what we intend to do or what we think is essentially in the hopper, we're calling that our technical term these days. What's in the hopper of, of, we're planning for it and we're just waiting to do notifications. The personnel that we have reduced for Phase One B represents twelve point eight FTE, approximately nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then right now, we have a Phase One C, which we're planning to bring back to you in December, which is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars or roughly nine and a half FTEs. For the non-personnel for Phase One, we eliminated almost ten point two million dollars. And then for Phase One B, we've eliminated three point four million dollars. All in all, these represent roughly sixteen point two million dollars worth of reductions in the eighteen nineteen year. I'm going to quickly ask Dr. Nolan if she wouldn't mind going through this slide.
Thank you. Uh, there's a few quick highlights to point out I would just like our listeners to keep in mind that these are updates that are as of November eighth. So during the previous public sharing, this has happened since that time. And as Rosalyn has pointed out, there's thirteen positions representing twelve point eight FTE. In these positions, a little more than fifty percent were comprised of positions that were through natural attrition, through vacancies. But nonetheless, there was a strong work-study analysis to make a determination about position eliminations as well as a distribution strategy for where the work would go, including an analysis of what are the must-dos, the main may-dos, and what do we need to do differently so that we make effective decisions. And we needed to consult three CBAs, collective bargaining agreements, so that we follow the protocol that's established within to ensure that we systematize and move forward in a manner that's respectful of the guidance within those agreements. And, um, one resignation that occurred. So again, more than fifty percent came from vacancies, but rest assured through a thorough analysis as a result of knowing that this is, these are critical decisions for now and for the future of Tacoma students.
As we continue our progress monitoring around the central administrative conversation, we have been tracking our central admin, and central admin is based off of the OSPI F-195 guidelines around activity and represents number of activities. This can be inclusive of many different unions. This is not specifically exempt staff or teaching staff. It, it's a collection of any union group that happens to fall within the activities listed there. We started the year in September with a hundred and ninety-five FTE in central administration. Currently, in the system, when we pulled the data on October, or excuse me, November eighth, we were at a hundred and seventy-nine or so FTE, and our anticipation with what we have in the hopper is that we're going to get down to about a hundred and seventy FTE by year end. When we look at the exempt staff, and, and I want to be clear that the exempt staff and the certificated staff can overlap. It's like a Venn diagram. Not everyone that's in central admin represents exempt, not everyone that's in exempt represents central admin, but some people happen to be in both categories. So when we look at the non-represented staff or exempt staff, we had a hundred and twenty-nine when we started the year. We currently have a hundred and twenty-five in the system, and by year end, we expect that we will have a hundred and fourteen with all of the decisions that we have made so far.
Ms. Medina, just a point of clarification, the a hundred and twenty-nine is a subset of the previous slide, correct?
No, it is not. It is not exclusively representative of what's here. There are central administrative staff, so if I look at, there are some exempt central administrative staff, and there are non-exempt central administrative staff.
Forgive me, I'm not asking the right question.
Okay, subset to me means it's inclusive of everything. All one hundred and twenty-nine are here.
That's not what I'm asking.
Excellent.
So I'm saying you're one ninety-five in your previous slide, and you're one twenty-nine of the second slide. The one twenty-nine is a portion of the one ninety-five. Is that accurate?
Some of them overlap. So there are exempt administrators that do not fall under central admin. So they could be categorically funded, as an example. They're not necessarily central administration. Uh, going back then, we intend to end the year around a hundred and fourteen FTE in exempt. When we look at our next steps, we're going to continue analyzing our spending reduction options and going through and scrubbing and finding where we have the ability to make adjustments. We have pretty much finished Phase One with what we have planned, and we're beginning the Phase Two process. We're continuing through that Phase Two up to what we communicate back to you in December. We will continue to address the downstream impacts. This is an evolution. This process is an evolution. So not all answers are clear upfront, but we're working our way through this. We want to be cognizant of supervision of the work, calendar of the work, what important compliance issues are coming up, job responsibility shifts, who gets impacted, and then unintended consequences as we address, as, as they come up, we address them. Finally, we'll be doing our progress monitoring back to you again on December thirteenth.
Thank you. Um, are there questions or comments from members of the board? Director Heinz?
Thank you. On slide number four, when we talk about the director of highly capable being eliminated, does that mean we no longer have a highly capable program?
No, that work will continue on, and we are going to adjust the way the service is delivered or the way the service is supervised, excuse me.
And one of the, the points that you referenced during one of our last meetings is the fact that, the concept of force multiplier. So certainly, when we think about transferring the work, we also think about, you know, how to be a force multiplier and ensure that the work still gets done and maybe differently, but perhaps more people being able to support and assist.
So I think it's going to be very important as we communicate to the public, if we just put this out in a press release or the viewing audience at home, I think it gives the impression that if those positions are going away, the programs are going away. So I would encourage us to make certain that there's absolute clarity that those programs are going to continue and that there may be a different staffing model. And if there's a program going away, then we need to, I understand we've got some terribly difficult decisions to make, and hopefully we don't reach a point where there are programs that go away, but we may do that. And I think at this point where I'm not aware that specific programs are going away, if we could ensure that there's that differentiation, I think that would be very helpful. In the Phase One A, there was a sustainability manager position that went away. Does that mean that we no longer have sustainable practices throughout the district?
No, those services will, um, they'll look a little different, but the individuals that managed those activities before have maintained their work here in the district. So we will actually have the opportunity to have additional staff be trained and do like-type services within the district, and we won't be eliminating those services.
So the force multiplier, so we're concerned of having a single person. Uh, and the person that was our sustainability manager, does that person still work for the district?
Yes, and so the transfer of knowledge will definitely be somewhat easier, if you will.
So the person that's been in that position doing a very good job, I know I've had comments from constituents saying it's a position that essentially pays for itself, and there were concerns about the appearance that it was going away. The, the title may have changed, but the performance is the same, and in fact, it's the same individual that's doing the work and teaching it to others. Is that correct?
I want to take the lead on answering this. The individual is still employed with the district. He, he has a new title, Facility Manager. We have three facility managers in the district. They all manage a portfolio of twenty schools. They will be concentrating, all three of them, on sustainability. Obviously, he's the expert knowledge for the district with sustainability, and he's going to be assisting the other facility managers with their portfolio as well. So we've definitely retained sustainability within the district.
Okay, that's good to hear, and I know that there was a group I was dealing with that not only was advocating for the position, but they were very pleased with the candidate that was ultimately hired for the position. So that person is still in the district. That's, that is good news. The last question I have on slide number six, year end, tracking towards a hundred and fourteen exempt staff FTE administration. If there's roughly five thousand employees in the district, is my math correct that the ratio then is forty-four to one? Let me ask, let me ask it this way. During the strike, there were a lot of people that reached out, and there was talk up on this dais about due diligence around appropriate staffing levels and a concern that we were top-heavy. So can you, and I often, I, I heard, uh, well, there's a fourteen to one ratio. I could never figure out the math that got to a fourteen to one, so this is just my simple layman's. If there's five thousand people and a hundred and fourteen of them are not exempt, can you help me make sense about that perspective?
We have five thousand one hundred sixty-nine active employees, and Rosalyn has her calculator out.
That's the simple, that's the simple math of it. If we have a hundred and fourteen, then we'd be at forty-five point four to one. Um, I, I would caution against that just for the simple fact of not every one of those individuals supervises staff. And so if you're looking at Lexus of supervise, supervision, it's going to look quite a bit different. We have financial analysts that participate in this category and, you know, other non-supervisory staff. So the number of supervisors could be as low as eighty, um, as, as it relates to that. So it doesn't necessarily equate one so simply. And I don't know where those calculations or figures really generated from or what data they were relying upon to come up with it. I'm sure that there's numbers out there that made sense at the time when they did it, but I'm not sure that either number that we just talked about reflects the true reality of it.
So what would be a way, if the concern is we're top-heavy, what would be a way to make that assessment?
The way that we have identified that in the district is looking at the F-196 data and the S-275 data and doing benchmarking analysis with other school districts and looking at our top ten school districts. In the last year when we did-
Ms. Medina?
Yes.
Can you clarify what the S, S-275 and F-186 are?
S-275 is a report that reports personnel that the district has off to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, and the F-186 is our financial year-end accounting that goes to the Office of Superintendent of Public Construction as well. And those two documents together provide both the costs that we provide and salaries and benefits by certificated and classified, and then the S-275 or Personnel Report tells how many FTEs. And so we're able to take that documentation because it's provided for all school districts and slice it and dice it and look at ourselves in comparison to all the other school districts. When we pulled the S-275 and the F-186 data last year and compared ourselves to the top ten, we had the highest administrative costs among the top ten. When we dug into Spokane, who happened to be the lowest of the top ten, we found some anomalies. And it looked like some categorizations were captured a little differently than how we might have captured them. And so I, I would say it's a cautionary tale of, it doesn't always equate one to one. How we've chosen to code things doesn't necessarily mean another district has chosen to code things the same way. And so you, you take it as a benchmark, as a starting point, and then we can do deeper analysis. It did tell us that we needed to do some deeper analysis, and it's resulted in a number of what we, you know, a number of the position adjustments that you see before us. I think that that's representative of the fact that we recognize that there are some work to do in the administrative group.
Okay, and you know, as the conversation was occurring, us being number one, I, I started with the assumption that we would at least be in the top three because we're the third-largest school district in the state. So it stands to reason that our costs may be more than, and I think we heard at the WASDA conference that of the two hundred and ninety-five school districts in the state of Washington, two hundred of them have two thousand or less students. So we're just going to have exponentially higher costs than most of the districts. And then when you look at the performance of the district, certainly over the last seven years, I wouldn't want us just to say there's a magical threshold that we need to get to, to be compliant. I think if there's a business case, and I'll look forward as we continue these briefings to hear the business case for the justification of retaining positions as well as the justification of eliminating positions. Because that, to me, when people ask, why have you been able to make the gains across a number of metrics, it's because we have systems in place that allow the distribution of services to students throughout the district, not just on a school-by-school or demographic-by-demographic basis. And, uh, so I, I, I look forward to us continuing to have these conversations about what does an appropriate staffing model look like for a high-performing, high-poverty urban school district.
Right, and I would, I would echo that. I appreciate that, and I think that sometimes there's a reason why you're an outlier, right?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Director Winskill, did you have questions or comments?
Looking at the Personnel Report today, I saw elimination of two relief custodians on that list. And I just, is that cost-effective? Because I would imagine that we are going to have the use of them, or they wouldn't even have been put in that position. And I guess you don't really have to answer that right now, but I just-
One thing I would like to address about the relief custodians is those are positions that are full-times, full-time positions. Previously, before our most recent collective bargaining agreement, they were substitutes. And we made a decision collaboratively to turn them into full-time positions. So while they are, the elimination of two of those positions, there will be a cost savings because the relief custodians require a financial burden for a full FTE.
Okay, thank you for that information. I, I don't have any other questions at this time.
Dr. Viall?
Yes, thank you. Um, no questions more, just comments. I think that people need to understand that we can't just take head count and divide it because we actually do our budgeting by FTEs, full-time equivalents. And so I think we need to make that clear to the public that we're not, when we look at, we have fifty-one, what is it? Five thousand one hundred and fifty-two employees, that not all of them are full-time. And not all, and we go by what we're required to by the state, and that's the number of FTEs, which is full-time equivalent, which for the most part, in what we're talking about, work two thousand and eighty hours a year. And that's a full-time, and to, this gets us, using the FTE as a much more accurate measure because an FTE may only be someone who works six, say, a point six for the year, and that gives us a, a different number when we're looking at cost savings rather than just saying we laid off one person. So I can, if we can kind of get that so that people get it, we get on the same page that we're not looking at apples and oranges when we start looking at head count, number of employees versus number of FTEs in terms of full-time, and, and when we start looking at how many people we're laying off and this total number of exempt FTEs are full-time equivalents, I assume most of them are full-time. Am I correct?
Correct. The thirteen represents the twelve point eight FTE.
Okay, that's what, and those are full-time, or they equate out to full-time?
All but one.
All but one, okay.
Right.
All right, the other, other comment is on the hundred and twenty-nine, kind of back, kind of what Dr. Garcia was asking. Is there a way to, to separate out the overlap so that it's a little bit cleaner? As to, or to identify what overlaps in terms of jobs there, so it looks a little bit cleaner? I know this is maybe nitpick, but I think in the long run, we, we clean some of these up. They become a little bit cleaner when we get into doing some of the things like Director Heinz's comment about, is the program going away? I think we need to make it real clear at this point in time, we aren't cutting program, we're just, we're cutting staff. And I assume that in the, that what's going on there is what goes on always, is that people have different, have two or three, are going to assume additionally, you called a force multiplier, we just called it assuming additional jobs. I know my case at OFM, I had three different ones during that time, I mean, all at the same time, assumed some that when we laid staff off. So I assume that's what we're, we're doing. Am I correct in that?
That is correct.
Okay, good, thank you. And, um, I think that's, that's the main thing. It's just, you know, fixing some of these things that, so that they are clearer. I know it's, I know they're clear to us that know what we're, work with this stuff every day, but when we're going to go out and explain to the public, I think the main thing right now is to explain we're cutting staff, but we're not cutting program. And we are asking other, we are asking our employees to assume additional responsibilities. Is that, is that a good, a correct statement?
Yes, that is. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and I, I really do appreciate all this hard work. I know what, I, I've been there and done that. Thank you.
I don't have any additional comments or questions. Thank you for the work.
Just finally, as part of the Superintendent's Report, again, I want to congratulate our school board for being awarded the School Board of Distinction at the WASDA conference. It was on last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and so it was, it made me proud to be a part of a pretty select group of, of school boards that were awarded. So Director Heinz, Director Winskill, and Director Leon were able to, to attend. And I appreciate the work that you do that resulted in that award. It was pretty obvious that it takes a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of innovation and a lot of true policy work to get that award. So thank you for the work that you do.
Go Team Tacoma. We'll then move on to item, we'll go back to item five point one, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, approval of recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Men's Warehouse.
Thank you for your patience, President Cobb and members of the board. Yes, you, you have set partnership of one of the four goal areas for the district, and so each month, we, we like to honor one of our community partners for the service that they provide to our students. And this month, we are honored to, to present the Gold Star Award to Men's Warehouse, and let me explain why. The Tacoma Gents is a personal development and leadership program for young men in Tacoma Public Schools, and the program focuses on teaching leadership, image, identity, financial literacy, and etiquette skills. And the Tacoma Gents program works to keep the program free to the families that are involved. And this is only made possible through partnerships, sponsorships, and other personal donations. And one of the greatest of those comes from the Men's Warehouse of Tacoma. the greatest of those comes from the Men's Warehouse of Tacoma. For the last two years, Kimberly Jackson and Men's Warehouse have partnered with the Tacoma Gents program to provide tuxedos to the students for the Black Tie Gala. The gala is the culmination of their year-long program and serves as a rite of passage for our gents. It's an opportunity for them to be celebrated by their families and their communities for their outstanding work and growth over the previous year. When the Tacoma Gents first started, they had a partnership with a company in Las Vegas that provided tuxedos to Tacoma Gents programs in four states. However, that business was sold and that service ended. And that's where the Tacoma Warehouse stepped in with Kimberly Jackson's leadership. They not only offer the tuxedos at a discounted rate, but make it viable for the gents to dress appropriately as they deserve to be. And they also provide this service at their busiest time of the year, which is prom season. You can remember back to your proms, right? Yeah, it's, everyone's getting a tuxedo then. So you can imagine that the pride that the Tacoma gents feel when they get to stand on the stage in the, in the tuxedos and walk with their heads held high and full of confidence. Let me just tell you a little story, what happened recently. There was a young gent who had missed the final fitting, and his tuxedo did not fit well on the night of the gala. And he felt really embarrassed and uncomfortable. He didn't want to go up on stage with the group. He wanted to just stay sitting, sitting in the audience. And what happened was, the staff from Men's Warehouse grabbed some extra jackets and pants and showed up at the event, put a suit together for him so it would fit appropriately. He got to stand on stage with all of his brothers to be celebrated by the community. That's the extra mile that the Men's Warehouse goes. And, and they've made a tremendous difference in the lives of these kids. So on behalf of the Board of Directors and Tacoma Public Schools, it's my pleasure to present this month's Gold Star Award to Kimberly Jackson and Men's Warehouse.
And I just want to thank Kimberly for all the work that Men's Warehouse, not work, the support that they provide to our Tacoma gents. I've gotten to be at the celebration twice, so I appreciate all that you do. And for the audience, I'll just take a point of privilege to say that the Jackson family over here are Tacoma people. There's a proud Lincoln Abe back there. So as a fellow Lincoln Abe, I just want to say that when we pour into our kids now, we get it back. So I just always appreciate seeing Tacoma School District graduates in the audience and to see the ways that we all give back, because this is definitely a community. And when you invest in your kids, it pays for it. So thank you, Jackson family, for your continued support of Tacoma School District students. Okay, we'll move on to item number seven. Members of the public wishing to address the school board. Are there any comment cards tonight?
No comment cards.
Wow. Well, I would read the spiel, but we don't have any comments. Anyone in the audience who didn't fill out a card who wishes to make comment? Okay, with that, we will move on to item number eight, Consent Agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Moving on to item nine, Policy Matters. 9.1, Second Reading of Policy 6750, Research Survey and Data Request Management.
The Legal Department recommends that the board adopt the proposed Policy 6750. This will help the district manage requests from outside partners when there are requests for data that also help the district to receive grants and funding.
Move adoption.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about item 9.1? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 9.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item 10, Quarterly Financial Update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org, then to About, and then to Finance. So we'll move to item 10.1, 2017-18 Year-In Summary.
Thank you. I will be brief. Every November, we bring you a summary of where we ended last year. This year, I just have a couple of quick points. First, I'd like to share what capacity is, because I think this is always playing into the numbers. Capacity is revenue and expenditures that we build in excess of what we expect so that we have the room for revenues to come in, and we don't have to go out and re-adopt our budget in spending the money that we actually get in. So when I say that, we anticipated that we would have a revenue of about $421 million, and we actually received $416 million. While that is less than what we budgeted, it's more than what we expected, because if we remove the $8.5 million of capacity that we built into our budget, we actually came in $3.7 million better than what we would have expected if we had not received any additional revenues. On the expenditure side of things, we did even better. We planned to spend $431 million, and we only spent $418 million roughly. That's a savings of about $13.5 million from what we had planned and budgeted. And if we take the net of the revenues, where we had $4.8 million less revenue and $13 million less expenditures, that means that we actually saved almost $9.7 million from what we had anticipated. So this is actually very good news. From a fund balance perspective, we had planned to end the year at $29 million of fund balance, and we're actually ending the year at close to $33 million. That puts us at a 7% reserve. Our reserve requirement is 5%. So we're just a little bit better off than what we had anticipated we might be at this point, probably back in July when we talked last about the 1718 finances. So I think that this is a news for celebration, and I'm thankful for everybody's efforts. And it's been quite a haul, and I would like to express the gratitude and appreciation I have for the entire finance team that worked to put all these numbers together. They've been doing it without an accounting manager for the last several months, and so it's been a Herculean effort, and I applaud them. Any questions for me? I only wanted to talk about the one slide. The other slide is in your packet, and you can consider it an appendix.
Any questions? Director Heinz?
Got a question. To what do you attribute the $9.7 million savings and spending?
We have overbudgeted for a number of years in some salaries and benefits. So if you look at the certificated and classified salaries as well as the benefits, most of that happens to be in vacant positions. We've built some positions in reserve just in case, as contingency, but not that much. So it's, we're not, sometimes that's offset by contractuals. Like an example is nurses. We're not able to find enough qualified nursing staff, and so we're having to hire in contracted nurses to help offset the need, as an example. Or substitute teachers, if we don't have vacancies, if we have vacancies in our substitute or in our certificated, excuse me, classrooms, sometimes we have to bring in substitutes. And so there's some offset there. Generally speaking, there was an attempt by the cabinet over the last several months to make sure that we were being frugal. We review every position with, that ever comes up, that's any vacant position. If it's not in a classroom, we review to analyze whether we want to continue moving it forward or not. And then as far as supplies goes, we typically have some underspend in supplies, so I'm not surprised to see that. I think $5 million is a little more than what we anticipated, though. So, A, frugal efforts, and B, we just didn't have as many expenditures. We didn't have the need that we thought we might.
So if we spent $5 million less on supplies, is that because, I know our purchasing department wins every award that exists?
Sure, I'll take that, yeah.
Purchasing practices, buying in bulk, are there?
I think that there are certainly lean activities that are in play. We are working hard to make sure that we're finding ways to save money across the district, and that's not exclusive to the purchasing department. That's across the system. I think that this is really representative of the fact that we do have strong financial practices in place, and that we're working hard to make sure that, and you see it through our audits, and you see it through our Citizens Finance Audit Committee work, that we're working hard to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible around the resources of our taxpayers.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Just a comment. Just, thank you, hard work. I know that without, that your staff's really been working very, very hard, and also that, just the diligence that we started showing when we knew we had a problem and not wait till, or we thought we had a problem and not wait until someone told us we did, and we were, you know, six months behind the curve. And I think that's what is showing here, is that we really started being pretty frugal. One thing I noticed is that amount of travel was reduced by $300,000 this last year, and I think that's another good sign of really being pretty frugal about who's going where and doing a better job of sending less people and having them come back and understand, doing some what we used to call it, train the trainer, where we're, you know, having our staff come back and work with other staff rather than sending more people on, on trips. And I think that's good. So anyway, Rosalyn, good job, and your staff get this put together. And this is a, you know, when I hear people say that this district has been well-managed, the hair goes up on the back of my neck. This district is, has not, you know, the comments that we have received, mismanaged and all that, that's a bunch of baloney, and that's the politest word that I can think of to use. This district is one of the best managed school districts, at least not only in the state of Washington, but outside. But, and that's indicated by the awards that we have won nationally for fiscal management and how we have done that. You know, what some of people don't like, perhaps, is some of the decisions that we make up here, how we allocate that, those dollars. But that's a whole lot different than talking about misspending of money. So I've waited for an opportunity to clarify that. This district has not spent, has not misspent dollars. In fact, we've done a very good job of allocating out and the spending of our money over the last seven or eight years, seven years, and that's certainly indicative by the increase in our graduation rates and the national awards that your organization has won from across the country. So I personally just, I'm not going to tolerate listening to that because it's not true. And that's why we're in the position now that, that we are to be able to make these cuts and looking at the impacts and being, being able to do it in a very professional and very, I guess, non-threatening manner is probably the best way that I can put that. So I just want to make those comments because it is something that has been grating on me for about the last four or five months, that every time you turn around, you know, the misuse or mismanagement, that's not the case at all. And you can look at this balance sheet, and it's very clear. So hopefully, those, those terms will get put to bed. Thank you.
I have a question about the scope of supplies and that is included in this line item, and that level of underspending for that line item makes me have some questions. And, and I'm just reflecting my own personal experience working in an organization. This is Tacoma School District, is not my organization, but just the process of procuring supplies sometimes can be a little bit elusive, so it causes people to like, use their own pens or to bring things. So I don't know what fully is covered in the scope of the supplies, and I'm reflecting on some posts in the past that I've seen from Tacoma School District teachers, like looking for extra calculators, or looking for a metronome, or looking for things and support, and like, the kind of fundraising sites to get some of those things. So I think it's a good thing if people have everything that they need and were underspent in this line item. But then I'd also wonder about whether folks feel like they have the supplies they need and know how to go about procuring them if they do need something. And if that's the case, then all good. But if there's anything that we need to do to make the process of purchasing things that people need more streamlined, then that'd be good to know, too.
Thank you. I'll take that note. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Wenskill?
That just made me think about the money, mog money, you know, the maintenance, the materials budget and just what it goes for, actually. It'd be kind of interesting, because I know that was increased by the state a few years ago. So just at some point to kind of know what goes into that pile of money.
MSOC.
MSOC.
MSOC, yeah. MSOC. Materials, supplies.
And operating costs.
Operating costs, okay.
One line, like one or two items in that supply.
Your question is about what it includes.
Yeah. And just at, you know, some point, it'd be interesting to know what we spend it on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the presentation and the update. Okay. Moving on to item 11, Curriculum Instruction. There are no curriculum and instruction matters tonight. Item 12, Business Matters. 12.1, Approval of the Statement of Work for Blue Granite and the Amount of $270,783 plus travel and expenses for the construction of a data warehouse.
Chief Information Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the statement of work with Blue Granite to build the Tacoma Public Schools' data warehouse, funding source, tech levy budget.
I'll move approval. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Can you provide us with just a brief description of what this will go toward?
So we're initially going to start with student data, and then we will simultaneously work on business and HR data and create a warehouse that will allow us to change the way we do reporting and enable transparency across the district, both internally and externally.
I'd also add that there's an increased level of efficiency. So a lot, as data and technology continues to evolve, we have systems that need to catch up. And so we have a lot of man-hours behind trying to support systems that are already out of date in those areas. And so this opportunity allows us to streamline not only the data collection and looking at the analytics of it, but it also offers us an opportunity to increase our efficiencies inside the organization, which has already changed with, unfortunately, some of the reductions that we've made.
Any questions or comments from this slide? Director Viall?
Great. Thank you. Well, moving towards this new system, allow us to do some of the things that I think I raised a question about about four or five months ago, more analytics and more in-depth analytic model building and things like that?
Yes, because this also just builds the platform for any other data sources within the district to be brought into the warehouse. So we're starting with student.
Right.
Business and HR, but at that point, we can bring help desk or anything else in, and then do comparative analysis across.
It increases our ability to model and do some more in-depth work in, in the area of the analytics that we talk about.
Yes.
Ultimately. Okay, great. Thank you.
Dr. Wenskill?
Yeah, so I just, every time we do one of these endeavors, it ends up costing us a bunch more. So is this going to be the initial, the end, is this contract going to accomplish everything we need, or is this just the beginning? And are we going to have more contracts?
So this is essentially in lieu of hiring a bunch of staff for short-term need. Building one of these takes very specific and high-paying skills. And the problem is, we don't necessarily need those people here forever because we're not in the business of building data warehouses. So we're essentially paying this company to come in, work with our staff to build the platform, show us how to do it, and take it from there. And it will run on tools that we already use and own.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure you anticipate this is like the, the total cost, and there won't be big cost overruns?
There is an indication that there is travel expenses that are additional to this.
Yeah, well, that was reflected in the, yeah, motion. Okay. Thank you.
Director Heinz?
Where's the company located?
They are out of Michigan.
Okay. And following on Director Wenskill's questions, what's the anticipated maintenance costs?
Because it lives and operates on things that we already use, it'll be in our Azure Cloud, which we pay for today to do some of our server operations. It will use software that we own, such as Power BI, Microsoft SQL Server. The good news, we're already standardized on SQL Server, so we just need to import our data into this warehouse so that we can use it in, for reporting.
So we don't anticipate that there is a separate maintenance cost for the warehouse? The products that we already have, ongoing maintenance costs would be continuing. So it wouldn't be an additional maintenance cost.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item 12.1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12.2, Approval of Underlocal Agreement with Seattle School District.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board-
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to sign an interlocal agreement with the Seattle School District.
Move approval. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about item 12.2? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 12.2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item 12.3, approval of YMCA Camp Seymour and Tacoma Public Schools' three-year contract.
Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends the Board of Directors approve the three-year contract, TSD 19-134 with YMCA Camp Seymour for October 29, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. Funding source, various school budgets and grant funds.
Move approval. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Are any questions or comments about item 12.3? I just have one comment about this item. And know from the past that some schools do go to Camp Seymour and some schools don't. Do we have any sense about why the schools that don't go, don't go?
So Director Leon last time kind of asked about what was going on with the schools. So James Neal is here. We did send out a survey, I'm not sure that, but, so we've asked, we've sent out a survey to schools saying, are you going? You know, um, how do you raise the money? And so, and then we'll do a secondary look at those schools that said no about. So what is, you know, what is it that's keeping you from going? So we're, we're getting the information so we can answer that more fully.
Okay, thank you.
If I just might add as well, what this contract does is we've been sending kids to Camp Seymour for a long time, but we never really had an agreement about whose court the ball was in when it came to student supervision. So I just want to thank Camp Seymour and their attorney, Sal Manjia. I think we laid it out really clearly now, who's responsible for what in the event that a school goes. The, the contract does not require however, that we send any students to Camp Seymour, but it just makes sure that we're, uh, we have a really safe environment there.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Moving on to item number 13, other business, 13.1, first reading of the 2019 Tacoma Public Schools legislative agenda.
The Deputy Superintendent recommends the Board review the proposed 2019 legislative agenda and provide feedback before the second reading. And just a real, uh, high overview for you folks. Uh, you've identified three significant priority legislative, uh, interests this year. One is equalizing the local funding authority for all school districts. The second is a simple majority for construction bonds to offer smaller class sizes and safer schools. And the third is special education fully funded by the state. You've identified a number of other issues to watch that are available through the agenda item as well.
Any initial questions or comments from members of the board? Director Wensko?
So, um, I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. First of all, if we are going to ask more money for the local levy and really the whole reason behind McCleary was to decrease the reliance on local levy. And I think if we actually increase that, or ask for the amount that we would like, we're going to be back up to the same amount we were before. And I don't think that the voters really realize that they're going to have a state portion taken out also and that their taxes would even be higher. So I see it as going even higher than it really needs to be. What I'd really like to see, because I do know we're at a deficit, I would like to see the state apportionment increase by a few cents and then redistributed to those districts that are at, um, have issues. And I think that would be a better way for the taxpayers of Tacoma to pay for it with having the rest of the state help pay for it, now, first of all. So I want to bring up that issue. Then when I'm looking at the other issues, I'm looking at, um, the, let me see. Oh, um, class size clarification. And I know that they'd like to have 17 students for K through three, which we can accommodate, cannot accommodate. Most districts in the state cannot accommodate that due to lack of space. But I would like to know what our thoughts are on space that is available and perhaps instituting it in the schools that do have the space now or maybe by next year and what our policy is going to be going forward with that. So I'd like to see kind of a plan, even though we couldn't do it for all, but maybe to do it for some.
So you, you just want to see what space is available?
Yeah, just can we do it, you know, and, and, and not to?
And what it would cost?
Yeah.
And, all right, we can do that.
Recognizing though, right, that doing it depends on how many kindergarten or third graders show up.
Yeah.
And what the grouping sizes.
And it's never, you know, they don't show up in nice 17-year bundles. I know that Director Wensko knows that and, uh, so.
But are there some schools that do have the space?
Just because I take a responsibility to give you a high-level preview. This simple majority for construction bonds is not just for K-3 class size implication. There are elements around sufficient, updated and safe instructional spaces for students across. So I, I hear Director Wensko's request is an additional piece of information, but I didn't want to leave that as this is for that piece.
Yeah, yeah, I was referring to the other, the clarification part. Clarification with the legislature on that, so.
Any other comments? Director Heinz?
Yeah, I think Director Wensko was the key three-class size funding flexibility that she was referencing, not the, not the capital.
Not the actual ones.
Yeah, and I would be as part of the analysis, I'd like to see some data that identifies why 17 to one. Why not 18 to one? Why not 10 to one? Run evidence-based school district. So, uh, I would be interested in through our academ, higher ed academic institutions or think tanks or somebody that can produce, um, some study that's been done, that's peer-reviewed, that's relevant, that's occurred recently would be fantastic as we, because I am interested in the ratio. There's been a lot of emphasis on the 17 to one with very little data to drive out improving outcomes for students. The, I guess my comment on the equalized local funding authority for all school districts, I'd like to be able to collect what the Tacoma taxpayers have authorized us to collect. We can make determinations about how we spend it and I'm happy to have those conversations. We had over 70% of Tacomens approve that levy. And I have a real problem with the state legislature arbitrarily usurping local control and setting limitations to it. So as we have these conversations going forward and I appreciate, uh, the able guidance of Charlie Brown because he'll help us navigate the politics of Olympia. But those sorts of questions have yet to be answered. And when I was at WASD, I heard one member of the legislature say, well, we have 295 different plans. I don't think it's, I don't think it's 295 different plans. I think if we started by letting local school boards collect the amount of money that their local voters have approved, that that's a, that's a great place to start. And if the taxpayers don't like the way that we're investing those dollars, they'll let us know at the ballot box.
Director Yell?
Thank you. I want to echo, um, the equalization of local funding. And to make it really clear, if you go back and read the McCleary decision, the McCleary decision did not talk about local levies. That was something that was left out totally and it was something that the legislature jumped in at the last minute and decided that they were going to, um, say, well, if we're giving school districts all this much more money, which basically they did not, except for a few, that perhaps there should be low, lower levies. But I think, uh, you know, this school district, for example, has passed its O and M levies for many, many years at high rates and have paid those, those levies because they believed in their school system and the, and the decisions that have been made. And we are elected to make those local decisions. And I think that the legislature needs to recognize that there is local control. And that local control, if they, as Director Heinz said, don't like what we're doing, they won't pass it. And we'll find out. But, you know, um, the, the majorities that we have had have been outs, you know, amazing to other school districts. They look at us and say, how do you do that? Well, we provide high-quality education is how we do it. And for us to have had our voters approve it, I believe it was 64 this last time. I want to correct you, it was 74 the last time, but, but anyway, high, high numbers. What?
I averaged them.
Yeah, you averaged them out, that's good, good. But high numbers saying they want to continue this. And for us to have voted, and we're not the only school district, most of the school districts in Pierce County went for $2,500 and got them approved per student and then come back and give us $1.50 per amount of assessed valuation, to me is, is a, a very large inequity towards a whole lot of kids in this state who are going to receive less than what they should. So I think this is why this, we have put this up on the top. If we could get our levy dollars back, we'd still have some problems, but we would be in a lot less problematic position regarding what we just went through in terms of looking at layoffs and, and who knows what we're going to be looking at in the second, third and fourth years of this as, as we go down, down the, down the road. So, um, and I happen to live in, in, you know, I think when I talk to my neighbors and we have a pretty high-assessed valued area of the city, say, you know, we believe in schools. And you get that all across Tacoma. And I think, you know, one, one of my neighbors said the other day, why or what's the problem with this levy? That the legislature isn't going to let us collect what we voted. I said, well, I'll give you their names and their phone numbers and you call them up and ask them because they're going to have an opportunity to get that fixed and I did. So all three of them. But I think that is, um, you know, it's critical that we as, as local, local school districts and as Director Heinz pointed out, there are 295 and they go from, some school districts only have as few as 80 kids in them or even less than that, up to Seattle that has almost 50,000. And, and school districts like ours that go beyond and do the extra things. And the levy dollars quite frankly have allowed us to do that. The intervention things, the after-school programs, those kinds of things. And those are the things that we as, as local elected officials should have that right when our voters say yes to make those decisions and to ask our voters. So it's a question for me of local control and the fact that McCleary is used as the excuse. It shouldn't be because of the Supreme Court and in McCleary never mentioned levies and never said anything about going and playing with them. That became an afterthought towards the, the final days of the last legislative session. I think that on the class size thing, if I remember, there was a study done by one of the nonprofits here a few years ago. I don't remember if it was the League of Education Voters or someone, got somebody to come up and they pulled that 17 to one number. But it would be interesting to see if that's been, what they do in other states, if that's what they do or, or whatever. I think it is critical that special ed, the reason that, you know, and Director Heinz is going to be doing this now, but with Charlie on putting these together, that a lot of special ed that we have done in our school district has been out of levy dollars, dollars that we're no longer going to have. And we shouldn't have been spending those, in my opinion, out of levy dollars because our special education programs are basic education. So we are asking, and I know that, um, where Director Cobb works, they are, Superintendent Reitau has also asked for that, that we get fully funded special education programs in this state. It's long past due. So those are our three top priorities. The simple majority for the construction bonds, I think all of us have seen what has happened to Bethel School District. They couldn't pass, they missed by I think three points this time. And they're looking at, they've got kids overcrowded. They're looking now at doing Saturday school and things like that because their buildings are just not, not adequate. And yet every year they get over that 50%. Everything else is approved in this state by 50% plus one. So I think, you know, in all fairness, our kids deserve good school buildings and the special ed issue. So that are our three major things that we're going to be coming back and asking the board next, next on the, what, is it the 13th to approve? And I think you're going to find that we are pretty much in sync with a whole lot of other school districts in the state who are going to have the same programs. So thank you.
I just, on the levy issue, I think I just wanted, um, for, maybe for the public reconcile the two, um, comments that we have heard about the levies. Like there is that messaging about the over-reliance on local levies. But it is, but the over, the comments about over-reliance on local levies is not, was not attributed to the fact that levy should be lower necessarily. It's because the state wasn't funding its share of basic ed. So the over-reliance is a result of the state not meeting its obligation. But for me, it would be helpful, I don't know if Ms. Median, you have these numbers in your head? They're probably not in your head and there's probably lots of scenarios. But it would be helpful to see side by side the past levy rates, dollar per thousand, our local, side by side with what the new state property tax rate is, plus our local levy, plus the tax levy, all side by side, just so that we have a sense of the total, um, dollar amount per thousand of assessed value. Or even just the local.
I think I just took that in a Friday report.
Oh, yeah.
Time before last.
You, okay, it was in there.
That's why it's in your mind, it's so fresh.
Okay. But I think that would just be helpful as we move forward with these conversations about that 2,500. So thank you for that. And then I had one other comment. Oh, class size? I, I, my recollection about the studies on class, I, I would echo the, the question from Director Heinz about the research because I do think a lot of the studies on class size are kind of old. And it, I think we need to think about what outcomes we're trying to impact. From my memory, a lot of those class size studies were about standardized ELA and math scores. So if we are thinking about and where we have the space, moving to 17 to one or trying to get to that threshold, I think we should be thinking about what outcomes we're trying to impact and if that class size adjustment is the right, um, investment of resource. So just again, I would echo Director Heinz's.
Could I say something about that class size? Because we did have 17 students per class for quite a few years in Tacoma, about 10 different elementaries. And it did not, uh, give the results that we wanted. But, you know, I'm just, I'm only reflecting on it because the legislature has fixed that number as to what they want to see. So, um, and if we get extra money for class size, how would we spend it where it would be appropriate? In the classroom, you know? If we can't actually physically do a classroom, what is the best expenditure and what? Because I know for a while there we were hiring an extra teacher and they were, they were rotating amongst the classrooms. I don't know whether that worked.
Yeah. I think we're all maybe seeing similar things, but thinking about what outcomes we're trying to impact and what's the best strategy given that additional resource around class size reduction. What does the research tell us, evidence? Director Heinz?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, who have we circulated this to? And I, I hope that, um, before we take the vote on December 13th, that the TEA has had a chance to see it and weigh in, uh, in the Tacoma PTA Council. I'd be interested to hear their perspective.
Okay.
Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you for the introduction or for this opportunity to review and talk. Okay, moving on to item 14, report to the board. And there's none tonight, no reports tonight. Item 15, board comments and reports. I'll start to my left with Director Yell.
Oh, everything tonight, thank you.
Director Wensko?
I'll just bring up one item from the school board convention that was so interesting. And it was the state auditor came in and spoke and there were very few people in the room, unfortunately. And I thought it was one of the better presentations. And they're looking at these new rules going to be written by OSPI on budget and how we can spend local money. But those rules won't be adopted until September 1st, but our budget is due on August 31st. And the auditor will react to that in the next spring, whether we've done the right thing or not. So, um, and then they've gone to legislators and said, if we have a class of fourth graders, we want to make it a smaller class, is that basic ed or is it enhancement money? And, uh, half the legislators that they've gone to have said enhancement money and half have said basic ed. So they're confused too about the issue. And it'll be really interesting. And I, I, they say they're talking to WASBO and Rosalyn probably knows this is coming up. And it'd be interesting to kind of hear what, uh, you know, at a later time, what, um, we're hearing from that committee from OSPI.
Thank you. Director Heinz?
No report, I would just add on that it's a good thing that the current state auditor is a former Tacoma School Board member that understands the inner workings of a school board and school district. If the legislature is confused. If the legislature is confused, I know.
Yeah.
Matt McCarthy has no problems speaking clearly and directly on issues, so that'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
I have no report tonight. I just want to encourage people in the community who have children in the district to consult the current calendar. There were some changes made around the, this vacation schedule, so please consult current calendar, social media to be sure about upcoming holiday vacation dates. And I appreciate everyone's listening and I hope everyone has a good upcoming holiday. So we will move to item 16 and outspoken future board meetings. The board will meet on Thursday, December 13, 2018 at 6:00 PM for a regular business meeting. And item 17, executive session, and there is none tonight. So with that, we will move on to 18 and we are adjourned.